We're gonna go ahead and get started with tonight's meeting. Ms. Goodell, if you would call the roll.
Ms. Drankuma, Ms. Gill.
Hi.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
And Mr. Lawrence. Thank you.
If you all rise with me before they pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. All in favor? Aye. And opposed? The first on the agenda is the 2017 VSBA Honor Roll. And there are two folks that we have, that will be recognized. Do you have any comments? Alright, so the first, Virginia School Board Association's Media Honor Roll Program honoring Nicholas Benton, publisher and editor in chief of the Falls Church News Press. The Falls Church City School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on school division and educational related topics. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goals of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. And we will go ahead and recognize the second recipient, who is not with us this evening, Ms. Kelly Lynn. And again, in the Media Honor Roll Program honoring Kelly Lynn, education reporter of WJLA-TV News and News Channel 8. Getting the Falls Church City School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on the school division and education related topics. Your work will aid this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who are attending. So, do you want to have any comments they want to share before inviting Mr. Benton up? If not, we'll invite and present to Mr. Benton for his... So if you would come up and join us, Mr. Benton? Now, sorry for a public comment. In accordance with school board policy, 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members and for the record, be in deposition of requests. The first person up will be Walker Hardy.
My name is Walker Hardy. Some of you have may read an email exchange between Dr. Noonan and my wife Amanda Hardy just this afternoon. She's putting the kids to bed, so I get to do this part of it. And I would say on that email exchange, "Dr. Noonan, in all fairness, I'm not convinced by your statement, and I believe that the board must find solutions to this problem laid out in this email, but I want to lay it out here again right now." Because I'm here to discuss the conditions of the first grade trailers, enrollment numbers, and teacher assignments at Mount Daniel. These trailers in Mount Daniel are small, and I believe the school system has failed to provide what was promised to our kids and what our kids deserve. Each trailer houses two classrooms of 21 students each. But one trailer in particular, houses rooms 11 and 12, has only one small window for that, for each class. And for room 12, where my daughter is assigned, the one small window is blocked by a utility unit for the trailers. There are other trailers that have upwards of three or four windows, or windows on the opposite side that have been completely unaffected by positioning next to that utility unit. But no one was paying attention to this construction. So the result is that my daughter and 20 other first graders are housed in a dark cave that is unacceptable for 10 months in a first grade classroom. This is especially frustrating when we see school emails tout the large light classrooms, showing pictures of rooms which indeed have numerous windows. Don't be fooled. I urge the board to go to the school and visit each room, paying special attention to rooms 12 and 11. And I've attached pictures of that to my statement tonight, just in case you want to see that. We contacted the school to talk about this with the principal. We are told that the construction firm sent whatever trailers were available, also unacceptable. Whoever was in charge of that contract with the construction firm had a responsibility to ensure adequate facilities, not just to take whatever they could dig up. I guarantee you, if six, seven, or eight trailers showed up with basically one tiny window, we would be having a very different discussion tonight. We are told about the budget, that there was not additional money to add funds or improve that space, to make it fair and equitable for all students. And we're also stunned to find out now that in this time of allegedly tight budgets and crowded first grade classes, the school added a kindergarten teaching position and a full-time paraprofessional. Means the kindergarten has averaged only 19 students per class. The school could have used that position as additional first grade position to alleviate the overcrowding in the trailers, or not hired anyone and use the funding and space to improve the environment. The additional room in the regular building could have been first grade class or house special. This staffing decision is especially infuriating considering the reallocation that was done in 2016 and 2017. If you remember, and I remember this well, in the summer of 2016, a kindergarten teaching position was made into a first grade teaching position, which resulted in the kindergarten classes last year having 24 or 25 students. This made sense because we were going to move the first grade into trailers, but that didn't happen. And now construction was delayed and first grade remained in the building, and now our students, the ones that dealt with the 24 and 25 students last year, are now at a further reduced rate. It could have been fixed, and could have been fixed this enrollment. I realize I'm running out of time here. I have submitted a clear chart that shows different options to balance this out in a much more fair and equitable way. And I urge the school board to hold those accountable who failed in this construction process and to provide more flexibility, because this enrollment process has been a problem. Our numbers aren't right. We got to find a way to fix this. You got to institute a more flexible system to allow this to work in the future. More details are in the statement. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hardy. Our second speaker is Russ Lee Cosbell.
My comment is about early kindergarten admissions. And I just wanted to say by a quick reminder, in case you don't know, how I got here, which is a couple of years ago, I moved here from New York City, where the school cutoff is in December. And when I moved here, I intended to return to New York City. My husband is still employed in New York City. We had sublet our apartment. All our children, we moved down here, we enrolled our kids, and our youngest child is on October birthday. And in preparation for returning to New York City, we did deliberately place her in a preschool environment that accepted October birthdays with the older children. And this was, like I said, intending to return, so she would be properly prepared for the year that she was required to enter kindergarten in New York City. That's how I got here, because we decided not to go back. Now here we are. I wanted to let you know that I did speak to the principal at Mount Daniel yesterday, who was fantastic. She specifically commended the superintendent for reaching out to her, so thank you. And she had a couple of ideas that I thought, that I wanted to bring up to your attention to say that I agree with them. So, she has totally valid concerns. She would like, I think, to, she is open to the idea of early admission kindergarten. She wanted to limit it to October birthdays. That seemed totally reasonable to me. She wants a whole child evaluation, which I know another board member brought up at our previous work session. I'm fully in favor of that. I have an advanced degree, and I'm married to a professor. I can handle academics. You know, what I want is a child who's ready for school. I can't give her a school environment. I'm hoping that any assessment you would provide, that's what you're testing for, that she's ready to go to school. And I support that. And the third thing that she mentioned, and again, I'm fully in supportive, is that she wanted to have the final say. And again, I very much support the idea that the principal, especially, but Mount Daniel generally would have the ability to actually meet the child, and they would decide whether that child was ready to go to that school in this city. I fully support a very strict, she makes a decision, I don't appeal, that's the end of it. And then as my final point, I just wanted to reiterate, I am not looking for you to approve this child that I have. I am looking for an opportunity to present her, so that you can consider if she's ready. If she's not ready, I don't want to enroll her. I just want an opportunity to show you a child that has been prepared to go to kindergarten, who I believe is prepared to go to kindergarten, to see if you and the school especially believe she is ready. So I'm hoping that you will allow an exception to your no exceptions policy, and do what the state has said is available, which is case by case consideration. That is what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Walter Zampelli. I might, okay, thank you.
Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Superintendent, member of the school board. My name's Walter Zampella. I'm a resident of Falls Church City. I've had two children go through the school system. I'm accompanied here by my son Matthew, who's a 12th grader. Falls Church has a great school system, and I've met a great, a great group of teachers. I'm here to do a statement of support and endorsement for Mr. Jamie Webb. Jamie has been an amazing teacher. He's been the best of all the school teachers that I've met through the, putting two children through the school system. He's focused and committed to his students. He works with the parents, and I think that's very important. I've had parent, I've had teachers and administrators tell me what I need to do with my children. Jamie's the only, one of two people that has ever said to me, "What can I do to help you?" And I am here to work with you. There's been a noticeable absence of Jamie at the school, and the silence has been deafening. Students have been, I've been informed by my son that there have been questions asked to his whereabouts. I don't know the circumstances. But if he is part of your discussion in the closed session, and there's a question of trust on whether he should be in a school environment, a classroom environment with our students, I just want to say, and I take this very seriously when I say, I trust him explicitly, without reservation, with my child. He's taken time out during the day and after school to work with my son, and he's just, again, the best teacher that I've experienced in the, putting two children through the school system. So if he is part of your closed discussions, please take that into consideration.
And before I, just before I do the last public comment, I want to make a, read a statement. The school board can confirm that Mr. Lay is out unpaid administratively pending board action. FCCPS is determined to act ethically, uphold its policies, and maintain consistent high standards for all FCCPS staff. Thank you. And the final public comment, and if anyone else, please fill out a slip, and to Ms. Goodell, is Ms. Kuchma.
Hi. I just, well, first of all, I just want to second what this gentleman has said. That's not what I came to speak to you about tonight, but I do want to second that. So I just, a couple of things. I just want to thank you all for your role in, in making sure the community has information about the referendum, and it's on everybody's mind. And so I attended the information session on Sunday, and I just kind of want to reiterate my question and share some of the thoughts. People are asking me about the detail, and I can't support something that I can't explain to other people, and that I don't fully understand. And so I feel as just as a citizen, aside from being a candidate for school board, I don't fully understand how the financing is going to work, and I don't see enough backup in terms of, so I can get my hands on the nitty gritty and really understand. So there's a chart which shows many options. Well, it's a great chart, it's very useful, but I want to know how we came to those numbers. So I want to see, is there a place where I can go and see that, I assume there's a conceptual estimate on, you know, the full build out and the various renovation options, because people are asking me about that. And I would just like to see those details, because I'm having a hard time running the numbers in my head and wondering how it gets so high. Now, some of the questions were answered this weekend, and I'll just reiterate, you know, the Tinner Hill apartment building was built, and it has 224 luxury apartments, you know, 330 bathrooms, two huge escalators, eight elevators, 500 space, parking garage, and it's $55 million. So I'm just trying to understand, as a member of the community, why it's going to cost $120 million. And I want to be able to explain it to other people and walk them through that. And so if you could just provide for me and for the community those conceptual estimates for the backup, so I can understand and get comfortable, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Just going to say, come on up and just introduce yourself, and you can, when you finish coming that out, you can pass it on.
My name's Johnny, resident of Falls Church. I also go to George Mason High School. And I kind of want to voice my opinion on what that man said. Someone who's going to George Mason for four years, deals with a lot of academic issues. Mr. Lay has been nothing but supportive of me and my situation. In full honesty, with 100% backing from me, my parents, everyone in my family. I would not be here, I would not be in the school, I would not be in the state, had it not been for Mr. Lay reaching out to my mom and working with us. I would be going to a reform school in Oklahoma for kids who can't work well in a average school system. When I was put in a situation where I could not take the finals for my junior year, he offered to come in at 6:00 in the morning and work with me and get them done, and I was able to pass 11th grade because of it. And I know a lot of my friends are working, but they all told me, didn't, on their behalf, and they said, they all miss him, even the seniors. Like the, the seniors who had graduated and now are in college. This is a small town. Word gets around. When people found out that he was no longer present at the school, I literally had five people texting me almost simultaneously, saying, "Do you know what happened? Why is he not there?" And these are some of the people that I had never talked to before, but it's that big of an impact that he's had on kids, that we all care about him, and we honestly think he's probably top five, top three teacher of the school. I cannot, I can only think of maybe four of the teachers who would take the time to come into the school, who live further away than most, at 6:00 in the morning to help their kids. Offered time outside of school on Saturdays, on, after school. Even, the writing lab closes at 4:00. I go to ACC, which is a program in Arlington, it's a Arlington community, a career center. I don't get back till 4:30. And he would stay till then, just to work with me and help me get my stuff done. I don't have the best relationship when it comes to parental figures and adult figures, and I don't have the best experience, and I always see them looking down on me. But I'd really like you guys to take what I say to heart, that he really does help students. And whatever the case may be, he is the most amazing person I have met who's a teacher, and I almost want to be him when it comes to someone who is a child, but is an adult. Able to relate to any situation and help you out through it. Kids will have insane panic attacks, anxiety attacks, or they will have a incredible bad day, go up to him, or just see him in the hallway and be like, "Mr. Lay, I need a break. Can I sit in your room for five minutes?" And he'll be like, "Yes." And most teachers would just be like, "Well, you have a counselor. You can go, you can go see them." And not, not to say anything bad about our counselors, they all care about us, but Mr. Lay will take it a step further and be like, "Alright, is there something I can do to help? Is it academics? Is it your relationship with your mom?" Amazing person. I really like you guys to think about that.
The students here at George Mason continue to amaze me. I'm grateful for the students and parents we have here this evening who've expressed their support of Mr. Lay. Thank you, Mr. Zampella. Thank you, Johnny. As the principal of George Mason, it's my responsibility to ensure the safety and the well-being of every student in this building. I believe it's my greatest obligation to provide each student with teachers who follow the appropriate policies and procedures, day in, as well as day out. Please have confidence that I will handle this matter with professional judgment, always putting the interests of our students first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? We'll move on if someone would read us into close, please.
Chairman, pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I move that... Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under Section 2.23711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff re-appointments, and staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff requirements, retirement, sorry, staff performance, staff rescinded offer, staff change in position, childcare leave, family medical leave, disciplining of a specific employee, EPED assignments, and advisory committee appointments and resignations, and student matters under Section 2.2377A2, in particular, non-resident student tuition.
Is there a second? Mr. Castillo. Ms. Goodell?
Ms. Drankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes. Thank you. We should hopefully be 10, 15 minutes, I, with the sun, okay. Alright, thank you. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If someone would certify the closed meeting.
Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 subsection B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted and conforming to with Virginia law, now therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Ms. Drankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Hi.
Ms. Gill.
Hi.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes. Alright. And I'll ask, can I have the consent for the, for the consent agenda? Alright. Objections? Move on. We'll move on to business on the agenda, and first up is 7.01, adoption of the FY18-20 triennial plan and work plan. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. It is a pleasure this evening to ask that you approve the Falls Church City Public Schools' triennial plan for FY18 to FY20. We have made some modification to the plan since the last time we met in closed, in the work session, based on the feedback that we received from you. We also held two, just by the way, we held two community forums to invite feedback on the Falls Church City triennial plan on August 22nd at Mary Ellen Henderson in the evening, and on August 31st at Thomas Jefferson in the afternoon. We had, we had some folks turn out. We didn't have a lot of turnout, but we had some come and had a chance to look at the triennial plan with us and give us some feedback and hear what it, what it looks like moving forward. A couple of things that I just want to bring to your attention that were slight word changes based on the feedback from the board specifically, was under our vision and mission, where we said that we aspire to be the premier international baccalaureate school division. The next sentence says, "To that end, we will continuously improve as a learning organization." Period. The following are five priorities during the 2018-2020 triennium. And then, in the actual work plan itself, we added in, I'm sorry, if you'll bear with me for one second, under safety and security, add, under 3.1.2, a sub, a sub work item that reads, "Maintain robust cybersecurity protocols and ensure the safety and integrity of our data systems." Those two pieces of feedback were directly from the school board, and we appreciated your, your feedback around that. By and large, just to report about the feedback that we received on August 22nd and on August 31st, it was, it was quite positive. I think people felt like it was a step forward, a leap forward maybe even, based on the last triennial plan that was there. The feedback we received was that it was more, perhaps more forward looking, and that even there may be intermediate between the front page, the Falls Church Public Schools' triennial plan, one sheeter, which has the mission vision, and then the, the organizing themes, and then the work plan itself, maybe something that would be in between that might give a little bit more information, that's more involved than this first page. But we anticipate, again, that this is sort of strategic plan 1.5, and intend to, in the next year or so, go into a full strategic planning mode. So with that, Mr. Chair, I ask that you approve the Falls Church City Public Schools' triennial plan for FY18-20, as presented and modified from the school board work session.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Are there questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Chair, I move that the school board approve and adopt the fiscal year 18 through 20 triennial work plan and work plan as presented.
The second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kuma. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, thank you very much. Next will be adoption of the superintendent evaluation tool.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am asking that you all adopt the superintendent's annual evaluation instrument that was presented at the last work session, just to remind the board of the timeline, that we are hoping to utilize for implementation of the evaluation instrument, is that in August, of course, we went through the work session, talking about it this September at this meeting. We would be then discussing this and adopting the, adopting the evaluation instrument, and at the September work session, next week, we intend to bring some proposed goals to start the conversation with the school board, of what those might look like. In January of 18, proposing superintendent's mid-year progress report on goals in a work session, and then in May, I would report out on the goals in a regular meeting. And in June, the summative evaluation of the superintendent would be the proposed timeline. I would anticipate that there might be some flexibility in that timeline if the board wishes to perhaps change some dates and push it into later in June or July, based on the outcome of some of our assessment protocols that we have here for our students. This evaluation instrument is very similar to what the Virginia School Boards Association has put out as the superintendent's evaluation instrument. After talking with my other region four colleagues, who are all superintendents, I gathered all of their evaluation instruments, and from that, selected a number of different performance indicators associated with it that I felt like would be the best fit for the city of Falls Church, and those are included here. So, this evening, I'm asking that you adopt the superintendent's evaluation as presented in the work session.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. Questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Nenin. Questions? Reitinger?
Thank you, and I apologize for not asking this before, Dr. Nenin. No concerns about the evaluation document, but the version that was circulated didn't have the goal sheets filled out. Could you refresh my recollection about what the plan for that is?
Right. The, the goal sheets will be proposed at the work session next week. We felt like we wanted to do a work session and have some time in between so that you all would have some input on what those might look like as well.
Any other? Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Castillo.
The other point I would raise is we had discussed a more frequent evaluation regimen other than mid-year and final, and I don't know what the comfort level of superintendent is with that, or whether there'll just be opportunity for informal feedback more frequently. But I, I wouldn't object to quarterly or even monthly, but I'm happy to go with the flow on the, of the board's inclination, and Dr. Nenin's as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Castillo, I appreciate that comment. One of the things that I look at in terms of, and it's sort of definitional perhaps for me, is the difference between summative assessment and formative assessment. I see the superintendent's annual, annual evaluation instrument as a summative assessment, so you will, at the end of the year, giving me, be giving me one summative rating. I see the mid-year evaluation as sort of being a formal, a formal, formative assessment. However, I, I'm open to informal formative assessment whenever you all feel like you'd like to give it. So if you want to do it in a, in a work session, or if you want to just call me, or if you want to talk to me, I'm open to, I'm open to the process in that I think evaluation is a year long. I don't think it's a one-time event, and I'd like to be as responsive to the board and to the needs of the community as I can. So if that means collecting some data along the way from all of you, I'm certainly open to that, in either a formal or an informal way.
Mr. Castillo?
Well, thank you for that, Dr. Nenin, and I would say I will never forget the difference between a formative and a summative assessment now. And I know you don't need to get a physical from your doctor every month, but you know, when we do the autopsy, if you will, I, I just, I don't want to put you or us in a position of saying, there's been this festering issue for quite some time, and you never got around to fixing it, and you say, well, you never really told us about it. So I, I think a healthy dynamic will result in that coming out in the normal course. But, but I do think we need to keep it top of mind to give you feedback.
Other questions or comments? If not, if, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Chairman, I move that the school board approve and adopt the superintendent's annual evaluation instrument as presented.
Castillo, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you very much. Okay. And we will give Dr. Nenin time to get down to the podium. Next will be a back-to-school update.
Good evening, everyone. It is really an honor and a privilege to be able to present to you this evening a back-to-school report or an opening day report for the 2017-18 school year. I, I wanted to open the slideshow this evening with a picture of you, you might remember, welcoming back our students on the first day, or a little bit before the first day, and on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see our hashtag of Team FCCPS and Better Together. We are back, and I am really excited because I believe that we are off to a great start. I was touring around a number of schools today, and on more than one occasion, I heard from our teachers that this was the smoothest start that they've had in a long time, and I feel really good about that. I was, had a chance to be in all the buildings on the very first day of school at 8:15 in the morning at George Mason High School. I'm happy to report that all of the students were in the classrooms, starting learning, and I will, I will tell you what a trick that is, having written and developed seven high school master schedules in my career. It's not easy to make sure that everybody's in the right place at the right time, but they were, and it was a really great day. And it's been a great week, and a great week and a couple of days. There hasn't been a day where there hasn't been something, where there's been a little hiccup, but it's a lot like the feedback from the school board, for example. When we hear it, we are trying to be as responsive as we possibly can to it. On the, during the first week, we learned very quickly that there were some issues with some bus overcrowding, and this afternoon or this morning, in the morning announcements, you might have noticed that Nancy Hendrickson has, has modified the bus routes to make sure that we take care of some of that overcrowding. We did have some other hiccups with some movement of kids and things like that, but we got them right where they needed to be, and as the weeks go by, we will continually, our, after all, a continuous improvement organization. The leadership of our schools, I want to just talk for a second about that. The support leaders first and foremost, just because they're at the top of the list. Our schools are beautiful because of the work of Sevi, and Sevi Padilla and Sevi Padilla's crew. I want to thank Nancy for her outstanding work, making sure that our bus routes were in place. I want to spend just a second talking about Deng Nguyen. All of our computers are up and running. We have a few hiccups here and there, but we're working through those as well. We did get a later arrival of a, of a load of, of new laptops, and they are all being reimaged and given out to students, which is great. And lastly, just want to take a second and shout out to Richard Kane. Richard is working in a very different way this year, particularly with the Mount Daniel project going on. Having to take food up there from Revolution Food and then being able to distribute it to, to the students has been an extraordinary task for him, and he's done it very beautifully, I think. Our teacher leaders, and some of whom are in the building, just want to say thanks to them for really making the first week and a couple of days extraordinary for our kids. Walking around and hearing, hearing the chatter and hearing the conversations with kids and the smiling faces of everyone really was what made it special, and that wouldn't have happened if those teachers instantly hadn't been able to build relationships with students by helping them feel comfortable and really getting into meaningful work right away. And I think that that was one of the things that I was really excited about. I, I think it's always important to establish that relationship and get to know who your kids are, and I think there are ways to do that by doing meaningful work, and we saw that happening in our schools, and, and our teachers and our teacher leaders were amazing doing that. And lastly, our administrative team. We, we have some really great principals and assistant principals that are doing great work, and if it wasn't for their efforts, we wouldn't have been able to open school, I think, on Tuesday. So, so I want to give a little shout out to our leadership in our schools, because we're all leaders in one way or another, and the students. And Mr. Holmes is a perfect example of that, is, has done a great job getting our schools up, up and going as well, getting the classes on time and being where they need to be. And lastly, our parents in our community. We have, we have an extraordinary parent community here that cares a lot about their schools, and their feedback is important to us, and we've been able to hear it, both positive and when it hasn't been so positive, and hopefully we've been responsive to that, and we know that that just makes us better. So I want to take just a second to welcome our new leaders. This is a picture from the Friday tailgate last Friday. We have, on the far left-hand side, Valerie Hardy. Valerie's the new principal, as you know, of Ma, of Mary Ellen Henderson, and Rory Dippold is also the assistant principal at Mary Ellen Henderson. Next to them is Amanda Davis. Amanda's the new assistant principal at Thomas Jefferson, and of course, Rob Carey is there next to her, who was recently promoted from the intern position to the assistant principal position. And if we had more time, we could play a game, Who Is That? And that is, is sort of invisible there, but I'll, I'll go ahead and give it away. So then we've got Dave Sorensis there, we've got Matt Hills, Liz Germer, Aaron Truesdale, and Paul Swanson. Missing from that picture is Kevin Clark, who had an obligation that night, but these leaders have done a really great job for us, and, and Jeremy, excuse me, Jeremy Ferrara at Mount Daniel. These are our new teachers. We welcomed 40 brand-new teachers, not all brand-new, but brand-new to us here in the City of Falls Church this summer. These numbers are not extraordinary. We've had numbers similar to it in the past, but these 40 teachers come wide-eyed and ready to work. I got around to see a number of them today, and they are still standing and not going home every night and crying. So I feel like that's a success and a win for everyone. But they really are doing an amazing job and, and loving every minute of their time here. Just a couple of major projects I want to call out to your attention and to the attention of the community to let them know how we spent our summer. I always talk about the summer as, you know, it's three or four months to plan a nine-month party. And so we've been busy planning this, this school year. At Jesse Thackeray, we have some new terrace tiles on the upper floor. Some of you may have seen that before. It was kind of beat up and torn up. It looks really great. It's a perfectly wonderful spot for our kids to play. At Thomas Jefferson, we have new ADA-accessible and wider sidewalks available for our kids, and I'm, I'm really proud of the city and the work that they did to get that done before school started, and we're very excited about that. We also paved the parking lot in the back of Thomas Jefferson, so if you are looking for a, a smooth place to park, that might be a good spot. At Mary Ellen Henderson, we paved and painted the playground and the basketball courts. We had a student last night when I was sharing this picture at the meeting for the Ed Foundation who was, who was lamenting the fact that when she was Mary, at Mary Ellen Henderson, the courts didn't look anything like they are. Quite extraordinary. And at George Mason High School, we have refurbished roof, and this picture shows the newly renovated, or newly painted and fixed up, shall I say, weight room. And some of you may recall that the weight room unfortunately had some issues earlier this summer from an electrical fire from the water fountain. The big news, though, this summer is that we have, have started in earnest the Mount Daniel project, and we are very excited about that. We are underway. This is one of the, the portable classrooms that is out there, so to, to give you a sense of what they look like in our classrooms, I've been in every single one of those trailers, three times, once with students, once without students, and once with just teachers. And I have to say that our, our teachers have done an extraordinary job at Mount Daniel, making those classrooms as warm and as comfortable and as invite, as inviting as being in the building. In fact, they're, they're sort of making a game of it now, and, and sort of talking about it as a, as a different alternative universe, and it's been a lot of fun to, to watch that happen. And of course, here we are at the groundbreaking with our extraordinary teachers, and old Danny there at getting, getting us off to a good start. Just as, in terms of that project, just so everyone is aware, yesterday, we started the, not we, not me, the Grundley Construction started the demolition of the building, but they're starting it from the inside, so it's quite quiet. They're taking out some of the ductwork and they're doing some things like that. And what is, what is happening, just to help allay some concerns perhaps that may be out there in the community, is they're actually going to take a section between the existing building that's going to stay and the portion that's going to be torn down. It's going to be about a 15-foot gap, and they're going to tear down 15 feet first, very quietly, so that there's about a 15-foot separation from what is remaining and what is being torn down, so that when they do start the heavy demolition, which we hope will happen, the plan is to happen mostly at night and mostly on weekends, it will be completely separated from the existing building. So you won't feel the concussion and reverberation associated with some of that tearing down. Another thing that I wanted to mention about the Mount Daniel project in terms of safety and security, we have the fencing up there, and so our kids can't get to the site where there's going to be construction going on. We have air quality tests that are going to be done on a routine basis to make sure that the air quality is, is fine as we continue with this project, and the crews will be continually spraying water on the site to make sure that the dust tamps down as well. So the sound will be mostly done at night, and the dust will be tamped down with water and the like. So we're, we're excited about that project and are back on track and on course for a finish in the fall. Just a little bit of data for you. I don't want to have your eyes roll in the back of your head as you look at these data, but I do want to share it with you because I think it's important to kind of pay attention to where we are. And so let me describe it this way. What you're seeing in the left-hand column are the, the schools, obviously. The SY1617 is the start of year last year. The SY1718 is the start of this year. The SY1718 projections are what we anticipated we would have, and then the last column is the program capacity. So what is the capacity of our, of our schools? So we'll use Jesse Thackeray as an example since it's on the top line. Last year, on the first day, we had 71 students at the preschool. This year, we have 73 students. Our projection was for 61, and our program capacity is 70. So right now, we are 12 students above what our projection was, and we are three students, and that's where you'll see the negative on the right, far right-hand side. We are three students over capacity at Jesse Thackeray. Looking at that same process, if you look at Mount Daniel, for example, which is a bit of an outlier this year, last year, we opened with 2, 376 students. This year, we opened with 351. We projected 392, and our program capacity is, is 370. So we have room to grow at Mount Daniel as it stands right now for 19 students. Thomas Jefferson, on the other hand, had 812 last year. This year, we opened with 816. We projected 835, and the program capacity, and this is with the trailers, is 882. So we have a little bit of room there for some growth. At Mary Ellen Henderson, last year, we opened with 588. This year, 603. We projected 641, and the program capacity is 600, so we're 5 over. And George Mason High School, 800 last year, 836 this year, projected 831. So we're 5 over projection, and we have a capacity of 876, and that includes the TLC space. So that gives us about 40 more slots for kids until we're at capacity. So if you look at the bottom line, you will see that right now, we are 32 over what we were last year. We're 81 short of our projection, but I want to, I want to be really clear about this. Those projections right now are not wrong because we are continually enrolling students, right? So we have more kids coming in daily that are registering. So on day one, we were 81 short of the projection, and we were at 20, 2679. We have a program capacity across the division of 2798, and that puts us at a 96% utilization rate in our building. To break it down a little further, I want to share with you just the enrollment by class at our different schools. Here you'll see, and I'll, I'll just jump right to, for example, let's take the second grade at Thomas Jefferson, which is right in the middle. Second grade TJ, this year, we opened with a, or last year, excuse me, we opened with 174 students and eight classes. This year, we opened with 189. That's 15 more in that second grade class and nine classes this year in second grade. One of the things that I want to call to your attention as you're looking at these slide, or these numbers, is to, there's two ways to look at it. One is directly across on the horizontal, and the other is on the diagonal. And what I mean by that is, if you look at the 189, for example, that we opened with in second grade this year, that is last year's first grade class, which was 191. Look at that 191 and go down to the 189, you'll see that we lost two students in that grade just over that first day, but I anticipate again that we will be back up to where we, where we were last year. This year, in second, or last year in second grade, we had 174. This year, that same cohort is 184. So that cohort grew by 10. Third grade, we had a cohort of 225. This year, that cohort is 234. So that's a growth of 9. And fifth grade last year, we had 218, and this year, going forward, we are at 204 at Mary Ellen Henderson. So we are seeing some growth in cohorts, but the numbers by grade are looking sort of up and down. So I just hope that as you're looking at that, you'll see those, those relationships. Looking at Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason High School, here you will see the sixth grade last year was 175. This year, it's 204. The seventh grade last year was 215. This year, it's 185. Again, if you think about that relationship, that diagonal relationship that I was talking about, last year's sixth grade was 175. This year, it's 185. So we're seeing a 10, 10-student growth in that cohort. Last year's seventh grade was 215. This year's eighth grade is 214. So you will see then, and this is another place where we're seeing the majority of our growth, which is at the high school. We're seeing 199 freshmen last year. This year, there's 214. Last year, 202 in 10th grade, 199 this year. 11th, 201. This year, 213. Last year's 12th graders, 198, 10. So in the secondary, at Mary Ellen Henderson and at Mason, 39. That's 51 students more than we had this time last year in grades 6 through 12. So as we do a deeper dive into the analysis of what those numbers look like, we'll be able to- like, we'll be able to report more going forward. But I do want to continue to keep our eye on this. There are two main, for the good of the community, there are two main reporting dates. The first is September 30th. That's a big reporting day for us to the state, and the second one is March 30th, and that's when we get our official ADM from the state. Numbers very closely, particularly the September 30 number, to see where that falls in comparison to these opening day numbers. I wanted to share with you, again, our hashtag is #TeamFCCPS, but a couple of quick anecdotes, if you'll indulge me here for a second. When I asked the principals to give me some information about their school, I asked them to also give me any funny first-day stories that they had and anything they're excited to implement, or they'd like to share with the community. So from Jesse Thackeray, there were two, a set of identical twins, Mr. Reitinger, you might be able to relate to this, even though yours are triplets. "We had a set of identical twins, and parents had to come the first day of school to be sure that the staff at Jesse Thackeray knew which one was which." That was sort of a funny moment for them, and they're very excited to be implementing their Super Friend program at Jesse Thackeray this year to promote positive behaviors in school and in the classroom. And several of our preschool friends have been wearing their Super Friend capes. We're looking forward to sharing some pictures of our friends wearing their capes. I also asked them, by the way, to give me any needs that they have, and I'm happy to report that we don't have any needs from the principals at this point, and also asked them to explain whether they were fully staffed or not, and I'm happy to report we are 100% staffed. We do have a couple of long-term subs, but we are 100% staffed at this point. At Mount Daniel, when a first-grade student was asked on the first day what her favorite part of the day was, she responded that she didn't know. So Ms. Truesdale asked, well, why, why don't you know? And she reported that because everything's awesome. So we thought that that was a good sign. And their celebration was that they were able to get the building and the trailers moved and unpacked in less than two weeks for students, and it was quite an accomplishment, and I would agree with that. At TJ, their staff did a fantastic job of being in the hallways before school, helping students find their way, and a great shout-out, he said, to the cafeteria staff who struggled with the freezers the first day but were able to get some food out. And finally, he said, "I can't tell you the number of kids who sat on their way to the buses the first day of afternoon dismissal. My teacher is the best one I've ever had so far in my career." So, they didn't say career, but of all time, they said. So that's good, that's good news. And at Mary Ellen Henderson, that I'm not sure that this is a funny story, but it's heartwarming. Rory and I had meetings with each grade level to welcome them back to the school and review school-wide expectations and met with all the students. And when she introduced Dr. Dippold as the new eighth-grade principal, the students cheered and applauded as loudly as they'd applauded for anything, and it was really great to see and a good reminder of the impact that a great teacher has. Dippold was a great selection for our school there, and a lot of really positive feedback from our parents and from our students at Mary Ellen Henderson on the opening days. And last but not least, at George Mason, our Mustang family motto of "we're better together" is really bearing out, and they're seeing some great things happening with their freshman advisory program. So just a couple of anecdotes from the first couple of days from your principals here in the system. I couldn't be more proud of the staff and the leadership in our buildings for getting us off to a great start, and thank you very much for the opportunity to share our back-to-school report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Any questions? Mr. Ankuma?
Given our history with them, how are neighbors taking any noises up at Mount Daniel at night, as you said? If the demolition is going on in the evenings or at night?
There are ordinances with respect to when they can work and when they can't, and so we've spoken with a contractor, and they're aware of those times. So we're holding true to those.
Okay.
Thank you.
One other question about Mount Daniel. Some parents have been asking about the asbestos. I know there was a note in your, there was a line in your note out saying that there had been asbestos testing done, and everything came back clear, but people want to know more about what does that mean? So...
That actually was in Ms. Truesdale's note to the community. And what we've learned from the, from Grunley Construction is that the asbestos check doesn't require abatement. And if it needed abatement, it would be a large process where they'd have to bring in plastic tenting and do a lot of work that way. But the amount of asbestos that's there doesn't require any significant abatement, which is a good thing because that actually will help us keep the costs down. I'm happy to give more detail if you'd like.
Yeah, I think, I think parents would probably like a little bit more detail around what that means. There's a lot of concern about, because of the age of the building, about asbestos, and also spreading through the duct system and also on the playground. So how are they managing dust and asbestos and any other sort of lead paint or anything else that may, debris may get onto the playground where the kids are playing?
The main way that we're going to be dealing with the dust and any of the issues there, we'll be doing the heavy construction when kids aren't around, and the other is to continually spray it with water to keep it down. But I certainly can ask some more questions about the asbestos, but I do, I do have some comfort in what I heard from Grunley that it wasn't an issue. Asbestos is a problem as long, it's only a problem if you burn it, and I think the way that they intend to sort of take this down and peel off pieces of the building, some of it won't be...
Other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Just to follow up on Ms. Gill's question. Do you know exactly where the asbestos is?
I do not, Mr. Castillo, but I can get some more detail about the asbestos.
I think that would be, that would be good to lay out so that people understand. Thank you for all your hard work in getting school up and running. I've heard great things, and people are very pleased to have you here in Falls Church, and so keep up the good work.
Thank you, although I didn't really have anything to do with getting school open. All of our leaders in the buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, for a great report. I've also gotten very positive feedback. As you know, there were some little hiccups along the way, for example, with the bus, but to the, in my experience, everyone's happy with the speed of resolution, and my compliments both on the report and the smooth opening to the schools. One quick question on the bump-up of students at George Mason. First off, on the, you know, being below projections at this point makes me very happy. If we could fall below projections for at least a few more years, I think that would be wonderful. But is the, is the general increase, because it was, it was notable that each of the classes at George Mason, even taking the diagonals, the cohorts were going up about 15 kids per class. Is that normal that we see a bump-up in students at the high school level, or I just haven't had a chance to look back through the historic numbers yet?
And to be perfectly honest, Mr. Reitinger, I haven't had a chance to look at it historically either. But I, so, so that was part of our deep dive and analysis that I'd like to do to look at what those numbers look like. There are two things that I want to look at. One is that sort of historical perspective in terms of the numbers, particularly at the secondary. Because I, my, one of my predictions, if I was going to make a prediction about what I might see in the data, is that some students are coming back for secondary. They might be doing elementary somewhere else but coming in for secondary, and that may influence these numbers. We have a lot of stu, not a lot, but we have students that pay tuition that come in, but those are the kinds of things that I'd like to learn a little bit more about as we continue down this path. The other thing that I want to make sure that I'm really clear about is historically, what is the, what is the September 30 and the March 30 enrollment ADM number? How do those correlate? Are they similar? Is there a dip between now and March 30? Is there a growth between now and March 30? And that would give us some other information as well. So, so a long-winded way of saying, I don't know what the historical trends are, but that's part of our deeper dive that we intend to do.
Mr. Castillo?
I got to just follow up on Mr. Reitinger's question and your comment. I think one of the things that would be useful, there's, there's the possibility of coming back for George Mason, but what the churn is, how many people are moving in, moving out, to give some sense of, you know, what's the net organic growth and how stable is the school population? I think that would be interesting. So it's really about mobility
The last slide, just FYI, is about thanking you for your leadership of the vision and supporting our schools to help us get off to a good start. Your support and everything that you've done with respect to resources and time and effort to get out there with us has been really great, and your dedication to this, to this work. I know that you don't have a lot of money to do it, but, and we appreciate your dedication to it. And we truly believe, and we heard this a number of times throughout the summers, we were meeting with, with our respective staff and with principals and teachers, that we are truly better, better together. So thank you for helping us be better together.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. We're going to move on to 7.04, Approval of First Reading of Policies, and I will turn it over to Ms. Menzen.
Good evening. We have five policies for first reading today. The first is Policy JHCE. It's a policy that we did not previously had that prohibits school personnel from recommending psychotropic medication for students. It's something that was required by the Virginia Code back in 2002. We did provide training to all school-based staff when I went to each school at the beginning of the school year to make sure that staff knew what this meant, what the expectations were, and to talk through if you do have a student who has behavior concerns in class or who's showing some academic struggles, how you properly refer for special education or speak to counselors and reach out to parents to get experts involved without saying, "I would recommend some type of medication." So I would take any questions on this policy, but certainly do think that based on the Virginia Code provision, something should be in place. Hearing none, next policy is BCB. The next four policies all relate to our school board bylaws, which are under Policy Section 2. The first one is school board officers, then school board committees, school board organizational meeting, and school board clerk. BCB policy would replace our Policy 2.2, which provides for school board officers. And I know, Mr. Lawrence, you had had a question about how this relates to one of our other policies that's being proposed tonight. Policy BCB states that the board is chaired by a chair, and there's a vice chair. They're elected annually at the organizational meeting, and it outlines what the role of the chair and the vice chair are. It's similar, BCB is quite similar to our previous bylaw 2.12 and does align with the Virginia Code 22.1, 72, and 76. Questions on this policy?
Mr. Lawrence?
Are you going to do all four, or?
I was going to go through all four, but I didn't, do you want to talk about, okay. We can come back to that one as questions come up. Policy BCE is school board committees. This aligns with our previous bylaw 2.13. It states that under, you'll see stricken out in red is except list any standing committees here. It's my understanding we've never had any standing committees, but we do every year have special committees that are appointed by the chair. The language that's in red is any additions to the Virginia School Board Association model policy, and working through this with Amy Hall, who's been instrumental in getting these policies updated. She had added in red the final sentence at lines 9, 10, 11, and then the additional paragraph at lines 12 through 18, since this gave some outline as to how the chair appoints members of the board to join in the committees. Welcome adding that. If you want to keep that consistent with what we've done in the past, it also, I think, would be acceptable under the Virginia Code to take that out and have that be our practice without it being codified in our policies. I know there's a balance between following in line with what the VSBA model policies are while reflecting how we do things slightly differently than perhaps other school divisions do. So welcome questions on Policy BCE?
One question hadn't occurred to me before. This only concerns committees involving board members, not anyone outside, right? So it wouldn't include any of our, you know, Special Education Advisory Committee or any of that. This is just for school...
These are special committees appointed by the chair, assigned for a specific purpose. So I do believe it would relate to advisory committees and special ed committees.
Okay, so all our advisory committees are special committees, not standing committees? Because it seems like standing committee would be something that would keep going automatically unless it's, you know, sunsetted or, you know, in some way terminated. And those feel like standing committees.
Looking back at our bylaw 2.13 actually helps me answer that. Previously, the language that said there are no standing committees comprised solely of school board members.
Yeah, I think that was, that was really the point.
Okay, I'm sorry. So your question was special committees are those committees that school board members sit on but include community members, but standing committees are just solely school board member committees?
Well, that's what I'm asking, because the way this is written, and it hadn't occurred to me before, it's, it kind of leaves it.
Right, yes. To answer your question, yes. There are no standing committees that are just the school board at this point, but there are special committees, which are those committees to which the school board chair appoints school board members to participate in.
Okay, and those would be the?
The Special Education Committee, the Health Committee, those. Am I missing something?
Let me just, I think we have a whole separate policy on advisory committees.
Okay. And that, Marty saw me, that's 512.
I think BC, whatever it is, is just subsections of the board. That's how I'm reading it. Not advisory committees or anything else. It's just if they want, if we want to have three of us do something.
I would say I had the same interpretation as Mr. Castillo.
Okay. I think you both are right, and Mr. Lawrence, I apologize. This, this talks about board member committees that could be formed as a special committee at the appointment of the chair. I'm sorry, that is right. And it's separate and apart from our Special Education Committee, from our Health Policy Committees.
Thank you.
Still learning my way around these policies. Thank you for your indulgence. Any questions on Policy BCE? All right. BCA is School Board Organizational Meeting. This would replace our Policy 2.22. There's some slightly different wording and format than our previous bylaw 2.22, but it's very similar as far as structure. This was one where Mr. Lawrence had posed a good question, which is why, under Policy BCB, do we say there will be a chair and a vice chair, but then under this policy, it says there will be a chair and there may be a vice chair? So if you all wanted to add language there, saying that upon the election of the chair, the board will elect or shall elect a vice chair, we could do that so that these policies fully align.
I would agree with that.
So I'll, at line 15 and 16, say in addition, the board shall elect one of its members vice chair and may appoint a deputy clerk. Any other questions about Policy BCA? The last policy, the last policy for first reading is BCC. This is a role of the school board clerk. This is very similar. The model policy from the VSBA is very similar to what our bylaw 2.16 had been. One thing that Ms. Hall did go ahead and add is what the role of the clerk is, as far as the clerk keeping a bound volume of the record of meetings. If we want to stay consistent with the VSBA policies, this could be removed. If you'd like to have it in there as a type of job description, I think it's fine to add it in the language in red that goes from line 11 to line 42. I will note that the Virginia Code does explicitly outline the duties of the clerk at 21, 22.177, and that talks about the duties of the clerk. So I don't, I don't think we need to add it here, but rather than sharing with you all that we had language in the other one that we're taking out, I wanted to put the language here. It's fine to leave in. If you want to take it out, that would allow us to update policies easier as we go forward with the VSBA policies.
Ms. Gill?
Could we just cross-reference to that code section? So say, the duties of the clerk as outlined in Virginia Code section blah, blah, blah?
We can.
So then we don't have to try to match it or update it if that changes?
We could do that. There is a cross-reference to, a legal reference at line 44 right now that cross-referenced 22.1-77. We could add language that specifically states that in the policy, or because you have the legal reference there, we could just keep the legal reference and take that out?
Take this, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ankuma?
Just, Ms. Menzen, looking at this, and I was trying to figure out if there is, but I see the word "may" with regard to a deputy, so I'll just leave it at that.
Yes. Any overarching questions about how those policies relate? I know there was the one, and I'll make that change.
Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was just one other thing with respect to school board committees.
Yes.
That might be worth, worth cross-referencing. I didn't, I couldn't find it off the top of my head, but it basically says the superintendent or his or her designate, for there to be a meeting, the superintendent has to be there, which is one of the hurdles with having committees, because I might want to reference that, and maybe it's not worth it at this point since there aren't any, but it occurs to me that's a piece of this puzzle that right now... a piece of this puzzle that, right now, is missing.
That if there is a, either standing committee or a special committee, that the superintendent or designate needs to be there?
I believe that would, for it to be a meeting. So, or just keep that sticky note somewhere.
There's not a reference to that in either of the Virginia Code provisions that are cited here, but that's not a reason not to look into adding it or making note of it even when a committee is appointed?
Dr. Noonan?
For clarity, is the suggestion that that be added to the policy? Or to make sure that there?
It's just that we be aware that should we set up five committees, that you're not going to have, you get a cotton, you'll be at meetings every night, because the committees, the subcommittees would need you present for them. So, that's, it's just a big fat asterisk.
I appreciate that. I just don't want to go looking for a place to insert, and the superintendent shall be, you know, at these meetings.
Mr. Lawrence?
Well, wouldn't that only apply if we had subcommittees of three or more? I mean, if we had, you know, a special subcommittee of just two, then that wouldn't constitute a meeting, and then the superintendent wouldn't. Yeah, I mean, not the need.
I'd have a hard time seeing a subcommittee of two, but I'm almost sorry I raised it. It's just, but it was just something that occurred to me that would be good to keep in mind. Thankfully, it's not an issue.
Just a very quick question, perhaps for consideration in the next meeting. On the School Board Organizational Meeting, I just, it occurs to me, and I'm sorry I didn't raise this when you brought it up, that there's less detail on this policy than there is in our current process. And I'm fine with keeping the, in fact, you know, as I often argue, we're not, you know, we're not super special. We can use the standard policies. But our practice under the former policy had been that the organizational meeting is chaired by the superintendent until the chair is elected, who then does the rest of the work. That element is missing from this policy. And I just, I would like to understand, if we go forward with the standard policy, whether we can continue that practice as just a practice of the board, or if something like Robert's Rules of Order would require that we do something different. And I don't need an answer right now. I just want to have an understanding if, you know, come January 1, we're going to need to do something different next year if we accept this policy.
Well.
Mr. Lawrence?
Is that in our bylaws as opposed to policy, that procedure? I don't know.
I thought it, I'd have to look back, but I thought it was in 2.22, the policy that's being replaced by this. If I'm wrong, I apologize.
It is in 2.22, which is a policy, but it also is titled bylaw, which frankly, I'm not sure why we have policies and bylaws, but the title is bylaw when you pull up the policy itself, but it's also listed under Policy 2.22. But the short answer to your question is yes, that is included in the document that's either policy or bylaw 2.22, that the superintendent chairs until the election of the chair of the board.
Mr. Castillo?
I would say one of the things that we could do on BCA that might help, and I think it would make sense, is as written, it sounds like the board is going to do something before it elects the chair, namely establish its regular meeting schedule. It might be worth saying, the first thing you do, elect the chair. The next thing you do is get the vice chair and the deputy clerk out of the way, and then get into that business. I think that could help regularize the process a little bit more, because otherwise, it's kind of, the election of the chair is just one of many things that happens in no particular order.
I would suggest, I certainly am grateful that we're trying to stick to the VSBA rules as much as possible, but in our bylaw 2.22, or Policy 2.22, it makes very clear that first meeting is the organizational meeting. Superintendent presides as the first item, order of business is the appointment of the chair. The chair then assumes office, presides over election of vice chair and the remainder of the meeting. So, adding that in as a second sentence there at line four, after saying there's an annual organizational meeting, I think would make sense, so that can be something that's specific to Falls Church that says, "This is what we're going to do every time." I'm seeing a lot of nodding. Do you all want me to make that edit for the next time around?
I would like that.
The sentences two and three of bylaw 2.22, we will add in after that first sentence at line four.
Thank you very much.
Great.
All right. If there are no other questions, I will impound a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve first reading of the following policies. Policy JHCE, Recommendation of Medication by School Personnel. Policy BCB, School Board Officers. Policy BCE, School Board Committees. Policy BCA, School Board Organizational Meeting. And Policy BCC, School Board Clerk, with the changes as suggested by the board to be included on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Renger. Second, Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you. Just mentioning if you would move on with adoption of second reading in policies.
Yes, we have 13 policies for second reading tonight, the first of which is Policy IGBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities. We discussed this last month. It aligns with the Virginia Administrative Code requirements, implementing regulations for IDEA. Last time, there were no proposed changes. There was a question about virtual schools, but otherwise, there was nothing to add. Are there any questions at this point for that policy?
I don't see any. If you.
Second policy is JGDA, Disciplining Students with Disabilities. This is our former policy, 9.35. This also aligns with the IDEA and implementing regs of the Individuals with Disabilities Act. I do not believe there are any changes proposed at last meeting to this one. And this also corresponds with the next policy, JGDB, which is the discipline of?
Mr. Castillo?
Just a question. Are these statutory obligations or these regulations right?
These are regulations. That's how the IDEA is implemented. So, there's a federal code, and then at the CFR, 34 CFR 300, they outline what the expected regulations are. And then, within the Virginia framework for the code for special education students, it's all at 8 VAC, 2081, 160, and on. So, the regulations that govern the delivery of special education services in Virginia are based on both federal regulations and state regulations, but they're still the law as it stands. In special education hearings I've had over the past eight years, it's asking whether those regulations have been implemented. So, they're read as laws even though they're called regs.
And if those change, then we just have to update our policies?
Right.
Because I've heard a lot that there may be changes coming
Yes.
From, on the federal level. We obviously haven't seen them, but I guess if that happens, we'll just revisit these?
Yes, and there's been talk about changes coming at the federal level for quite some time. So, I think that the last major changes were in 2004, but as changes do come, we'll make sure that we update our policies and provide training to staff so that they know what our expectations are and that they're meeting the needs of our students with disabilities. Okay. So, Policy JGDA, didn't sound like there were any questions. The next policy, JGDB, is related. This is the discipline of students with disabilities for infliction of serious bodily injury. This is defined under our code, and it's broken out in the VSBA model regs, which makes sense. When there's a serious bodily injury, you're allowed to change a student's interim placement for 45-day periods. So, if a student has maimed another student or a teacher, there can be immediate steps taken that you might not be able to take without it being considered a change of placement under IDEA, but it has to be in very serious circumstances in which there's, as the case law has shown, in which there's disfigurement. But this makes clear that if it is a serious enough bodily injury, there can be a different approach to it. I appreciated that in the VSBA regs, it broke it out because it is a very unique situation. It's not very common, but does need to be addressed, and so that would be a separate policy, JGDB. Are there any questions about that policy? Hearing none. Policy BB is our next one. We're now moving into the policies that relate to our, either policies or bylaws under Section 2 that talk about the school board legal status and authority. BB would replace bylaw 2.1, which talks about the legal status and the authority of the school board being derived from the Constitution. Any questions about Policy BB? Policy BBA would replace bylaw 2.1, talking about board member authority. This, the other one is also 2.1, so this is, our policy had put the authority of the board, and the title of the board is one policy. This breaks it out into two policies, but otherwise is very much in line with what our previous bylaw 2.1 had said. Any questions on BBA? Policy BBA relates to our former policy and bylaw 2.2, which is the powers and duties of the board. This new one is also the power and the duties of the board. I do see that it lines 29, 30, 31, 32, 33. There's a strike-through that we should have completely deleted, so I would suggest that we take that out and make sure that there's no strike-throughs in our policy, and otherwise that I don't think has any changes from the last reading. Any questions on BBA? So, I would edit it to take out those lines 30 to 34 that show the strike-through. I apologize. Next policy is BBD. That is board member removal from office and would relate to our former policy 2.8. Previously, our bylaw 2.8 had talked about school board members, qualifications, oath of office, vacancies, and removal. Under the VSBA model policies, those are broken out into four different sections, the first of which is this, which is BBD, the removal of a board member from office. It says very little. Essentially, it says, "We will follow this code section," and the code section governs how an individual is removed, what's the standard, who presides over it. But that's very much in line with what we had said previously in our bylaw 2.8. Any questions on BBD? BBE is the unexpired term fulfillment, saying that if there are vacancies, the position is filled as provided by law. That's consistent with our previous bylaw 2.8. Next one is BBBA, another continuation of 2.8, the qualifications of a school board member as outlined in the Virginia Code. The only addition we had made from last time is saying he/she underlined six, which was, I appreciated the attention to detail from the dice. Any questions on BBBA? The last policy that relates to 2.8 is BBBC, the board member oath of office, clarifying that board members must take the oath of office. We did go ahead and add the lines eight and nine so that it reflected what was in our previous policy, that board members who fulfill unexpired terms also have to take the oath of office before they can enter into duties of the office. Any questions about BBBC? Right. Our last three of the evening all relate to electronic tobacco, tobacco-free schools, electronic cigarettes, and the use of tobacco and electronic cigarettes on school property. We had talked about this actually at second reading at the last meeting. There had been a request that we added a definition of what electronic cigarettes is. I've done that at each of the, I'll point out each line for Policy GBC, which also then is cross-categorized in JFCH, so that there's one under the students, one under Staff Section, which is the G policies, and one under Student Section, which is the J lettered policies. I've added at line 39 to 40, where we say students are prohibited from possessing electronic cigarettes, clarified or nicotine vapor products as defined by the Virginia Code. And then also, again, at line 42, all other persons are prohibited from using electronic cigarettes, and then also stated or nicotine vapor products on school premises. And then down at the legal references, I did add the reference to where in the Virginia Code right now nicotine vapor products are defined. That's at 18.2, the criminal code, at 371.2. No questions on that policy? So, at JFCH, the same as GBC. So, at GBEC, electronic cigarettes, I added the same line at line three, use of electronic cigarettes, and added or nicotine vapor products as defined by the Virginia Code is prohibited on school buses, school premises. Any questions on GBEC? Last policy of the night is Policy KGC, the use of tobacco and electronic cigarettes on school premises. Added the same clarification of nicotine vapor products along with electronic cigarettes at line 24, 25, and then again at 27 to 28, with a reference under legal references to where it appears in the Virginia Code. Questions about KGC?
Thank you very much, Ms. Menzen. And thank you for those clarifications within the, where additional work was needed to add those. I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair? I move that the school board approve and adopt second reading of the following policies. BB, School Board Legal Status. BBA, School Board Powers and Duties. BBAAs, Board Member Authority. BBBA, Qualifications of School Board Members. BBBC, Board Member Oath of Office. BBD, Board Member Removal from Office. BBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. IGBA, Programs for Students with Disabilities. JGDA, Disciplining Students with Disabilities. And JGDB, Discipline of Students with Disabilities for Infliction of Serious Bodily Injury. Policy KGC, Use of Tobacco and Electronic Cigarettes on School Premises. Policy GBEC, Electronic Cigarettes. And Policy GBC, Tobacco-Free School for Staff and Students. And Policy JFCH, Tobacco-Free School for Staff and Students.
Question there, second?
Thank you.
Ms. Ankuma. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. Thank you very much. And want to see, are there any future agenda items that anyone may have? Any future agenda items? There are none, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not too many things this evening since I did my back-to-school report. A lot of it was around that. Just want to reiterate what a great first day it was, first week, and now we're on to a great school year. I want to thank everyone in the community that came out to our tailgate the other night. It was really a lot of fun and a great community event to really celebrate George Mason and all of our schools. All the mascots were there. It was a lot of fun. I want to just say that on Sunday, well, Saturday is Taste of Falls Church, which is going to be a lot of fun. I will be a judge this year. So, one of the questions I was asked is what special training have I had, or what will I do in advance of that to be a good judge? And I want you to know I will start fasting on Friday, so I'll be eating a lot on Sunday. And then on Saturday. And then on Sunday is the run for the schools. And I want to just challenge the board. Ms. Gill has her shirt there. If you'll hold it up just for a second. This is our Better Together shirt, and I wanted to invite the board to come do just the one-mile family walk. Wear your blue shirt. I'll have mine on, and we'd love to see you out there, and we can all walk together. I want to thank everyone that came out to the meeting for the high school on Sunday. It was really well-attended. There was really great conversations that have spurned from that. A couple of things I just want to clarify that came out of that, that I think are worthy of just mentioning, that are sort of getting out there in the community, and I want to make sure that we sort of spend a moment just talking about it. The first thing is, any new construction that would be part of any kind of condominium project, whatever it is, there are some calculations that are done typically to identify what the student yield ratios are for those particular kinds of units. My understanding is that, well, from the data that's borne out from these studies, that typically new constructed one- and two-bedroom condominiums yield between .13 and .15 students per unit. So, for every 1,000 units that are built, it's about 130 students that come out of that. And there seems to be some communications out in the community that any, 1,000 units would bring hundreds and hundreds of kids, and that just doesn't bear out in the data. And the second is that I was unfortunately accused this morning, I think, of an infomercial on Sunday. And I want to be really clear that I want to give a fair and balanced message in this process. It's not my job to tell people how to vote. It's my job to portray what the pros and the cons are and what the truth is if we open a brand-new school, or the truth is if we do a renovated school. So, I did that on Sunday, and about 99% of the people were very pleased with a balanced approach. So, just wanted to share that out. Lastly, we've got a lot going, and each week we have sporting events and activities at the high school, and I would invite all of you and the community to come out and support our folks in all of our schools. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the superintendent? We will move on to board and student liaison comments, and I will start down with Mr. Ankuma.
Just taking some notes here. My assignments with the band boosters, we haven't met yet, so that's yet to come. And the... And the same goes for the Special Education Committee. The Falls Church, haven't anything scheduled yet with the Falls Church Elementary P T A, but I did meet the, happened to bump into the new incoming president at, or Chair of the committee at, at church on Sunday. So we had a little discussion as to what the way forward. And this morning, Dr. Noonan joined us at the, at the Board Meeting of the Falls Church Education, Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, and had a very good welcome, told us a little bit about what was going on, and at least informed the folks. Everybody got to meet Dr. Noonan, so that was a, a good event this morning. But otherwise, we're looking forward to getting into all our assignments with gusto.
Thank you, Mr. Kuma. Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. So I also have a fairly brief report, given that none of the, my liaison assignments have met yet for the new year. I did want to say, in the, in the nature of sharing a personal anecdote, as you probably know, Dr. Noonan, all my kids are lifers, and they've just gone to ninth grade for the first time. So having done back-to-school night at all of the previous schools except Jesse Thackeray, they attended, or my wife and I attended our first back-to-school night at George Mason. And it was, like, like all the other back-to-school nights, it was a great event. I was really impressed with the dedication and breadth of skills that the faculty had, and really the, the, the different things that they brought to the table. In particular, I, the, the teacher who is teaching World Civilizations II to my daughter is normally a philosophy teacher. He teaches I B philosophy, and this is the first time he's taught history in a long time. And he was very upfront. It was just, it was, you know, I'm doing this, but I'm really passionate about teaching kids. And I, I walked out of that extremely comfortable in all of the teachers that our kids had. The, the personal anecdote is, I, I discovered something about George Mason that I had been told before, which I didn't know, which is it really is a rabbit worm. And, you know, I, I made the terrible mistake of going down to the basement by the wrong stairwell, because I didn't realize that there are two parts to the basement in George Mason, and you can't get, although they're adjacent, you can't get from one to the other in the basement. You have to go back up and cross over like a sky bridge and then go back down again. So I was sadly late to class. But I did not get a detention. So it was a wonderful evening. Thank you. And thank you to the principal and all of the teachers at George Mason.
Thank you. I had the Foundation Board Meeting last night. Dr. Noonan was there, gave a preview of the presentation he gave tonight. I do want to encourage everybody, sign up for the Run for the Schools. Even if you can't be there, I think we're going to be gone this weekend, but I signed up my, myself and my son. I just want to list a few things that the Foundation funds, because I think a lot of people don't really understand how many different things they do. And this is just the highlights. They have three separate after-school programs for ESOL kids that work on both numeracy and literacy. They have a, a summer program for ESOL kids to pay fees for them to take classes and, and be in, you know, sessions during the week at the community center. They have the backpacks and books, which is, you know, in the summer, you send kids home with a backpack that has both food for the weekend as well as books. They have a diabetes support fund. They have an emergency fund, which is just there for families who happen to have emergencies about nothing specific to anything else. They have a smart technology fund, which I think is one of the best things. We, we give kids, you know, access to technology. If they then go home and they can't get onto the Internet, it's, it's a paperweight. So the hotspots that the, the Foundation provides are huge. They've got peer mentoring. They have music therapy grants. They have an ambassadors program for, you know, ninth graders coming into the high school for, you know, with people who are suddenly three feet taller than them with beards, and they're used to the middle school. It's, it's kind of scary. And of course, you know, P T A grants, teacher boosters and everything. But the other thing I want to say is, and I'm glad we've got some teachers here, the Foundation has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give out in super grants, and the applications are due at the end of the week. They are actively looking for people who are creative and not shy about amounts. You know, they're not talking five hundred, five thousand, ten thousand dollars. I mean, aim big, but they have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give away to our teachers. So I know a lot of people have been working on it, but, you know, get everything done, get everything signed, and get it sent in, because, you know, it's a big pot of money just sitting there. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gill.
Thank you. Only one of my three committees has met, and that was the boosters, athletic boosters. I want to thank Kate Nesson for putting on an amazing tailgate. It was wonderful. I love seeing kids from Thackeray all the way up through high school, all playing together. It was really a great community-building event. And the boosters are, really support so many of our athletics, and they don't have a lot of members. So if you have kids who play sports, or you just want to support the boosters, I think it's thirty dollars to join, and they do a lot to help our kids succeed in athletics.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castillo.
So I just signed up for the race for the schools, so, the run for the schools. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in it to win it. And Matt, I missed back-to-school night Wednesday at George Mason because I was at the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. A lot going on there, a lot of good projects in Falls Church. The big focus of attention right now is getting the turf field in place, which is ways down the road, but there's a lot of enthusiasm for that. And that's it for now for me.
Thank you very much. Go down, Mr. Holmes.
Hi. Yes, first and foremost, I've been receiving many messages about Lay, so I'm just going to read them. They're from various students, all grades. One of them says, he was a great teacher that always stuck his neck out for students that needed help on a test or an assignment. Lay is one of the best teachers and special educators that I've personally known. He's always been there to support me, even when I personally thought I couldn't do it. I think he really does change people's lives. He generally cares about what, about everyone, no matter what. I've also gotten other messages. And personally, I, I would just want to say that I would not be here if it wasn't for him. He's given me a drive. He's been a motivator for me. He encouraged me to do what sparked my interest in government, which was Model U N when I first came as a freshman. So, yeah, I really consider that. And then second, on the new bus schedule, there, there was a few changes to some of the stops, but for South Maple and Tanner Hill, there was no change. And that is a really crowded bus. There are people sitting on the floors going to and from school. And there was no changes that part of the bus schedule. And other than that, it was a great back-to-school.
Thank you very much. And I just want to add on, on great convocation with all the teachers. It was a great event, welcoming all of our returning teachers, our staff, both the custodial, bus drivers, all. It was a great time to welcome them all back, and they were all genuinely excited about being back and getting the school year started. I was with Dr. Noonan for two of his morning stops on the first day of school with, with him at George Mason, and then also at M E H, which was a fun experience over at M E H, where teachers lined the hallway before going into the cafeteria, high-fiving the students as they went in for their kind of introduction to their responsibilities within their particular grade. So that was a really energetic and just kind of fun time for those kids, and they really enjoyed that, I think, for them. And then before, I broke off with Dr. Noonan and went over to Mount Daniel, because I had not been over since the relocatables were put in, and went with Ms. Druzdal to walk through those. And I do want to commend the teachers over there for getting those up and running so quickly. And I thought they were laid out very well, that the teachers made them look great for the students who were in them. And students were there when I was, went through them, and as they were all kind of getting the, this is what we're going to be doing on a daily basis in the class. So it was a, a good experience, and I think I commend them for, for getting them together. Also commend them for, for, for their, their patience, because they went through a point where they packed up, moved, moved out, and then had to go back in, and packed up this time, and were ready to go and be able to move in for, for then get the schools up and going last week. So I do thank them for, for their patience and the great job that they did getting those, all those rooms ready for students. As I look at, from the parent earlier this evening, I understand, I, I did go into the, the one, at least actually both of the relocatables that had the one window, and understand some of that, but I look at it from the perspective of, we're going to get those, get the, the work done as quickly as possible. And it's a temporary situation that hopefully we will move as quickly as possible. But definitely, if there, there are issues that are there, we will address those as they're, they come to, and definitely will, will work with the parents as they potentially have questions and concerns about those. But I think for what I saw in that situation, the teachers have done a great job and got us up and running with those, with the students saying, getting us ready for the, the construction that's going to be happening. And we, I, I pledge that we will keep parents updated as we move through that process so they know what's going on, and keeping them in, informed as we move forward that if there are any things that happen during that construction that they need to be informed of, we will make sure we will get that information to them as soon as possible. But I think we've gotten off to a great, great year. Couple of hiccups, but I think we, if you, any time, situation that you get started, there always will be a couple of those, but I think we addressed them as quickly as possible. And still, as, if there are any parents that have any questions or concern, please make sure, you know, contact any of us, the Board Members, but also Dr. Noonan and the staff at Central Office so that we can get those addressed as soon as possible, because if we don't know about them, there's no way to make sure that they're going to get taken care of. And the final part of the night will be, Ms. Goodell has got several minutes to update it to approve, so I will ask unanimous consent for approval of the minutes for December fifth, twenty sixteen, December sixth, twenty sixteen, January tenth, twenty seventeen, January twelfth, twenty seventeen, and September first, twenty seventeen. With, without objection? All right, you have some materials here tonight, and if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.